... led by Mr. Armstrong.
Father of God, we thank you for your wonderful love, your grace, your wisdom, and your tender mercy to govern our hearts, our minds, and our deeds. These blessings we act in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you join me for a moment of silence for Mr. Martin, retired Fire District Chief, Mr. James Monroe Bowen, father of Terry Bowen, one of our former police officers, the father of one of our former police officers, who now works for the Marshals Office, and former Mayor TJ Parker of Marug? Thank you. Attention, salute.
Pledge. Now, please allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the God, individual with liberty and justice.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determine the quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Our President, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We are not live tonight as I thought we would be. There's a problem with the feed, and the last time I made that announcement and started getting really comfortable and just telling about my day, I found out the feed was live. But it's truly off this time, Mr. Floyd. But you can view our council meetings at a later date because it is being recorded. Wish to welcome you here, and this is our first meeting into the new fiscal year. Made a few announcements on our June 28 meeting when we had the budget approved. It's been a tough year again, but I remain faithful and optimistic that our city will bail out of the problems that we have had. We're working very hard to deliver the quality of service to you that you are so deserving of as citizens. We had a luncheon for the new superintendent, Dr. George Naflin, who is here with us tonight, and we're going to hear from him shortly. Wanted to introduce him formally to the city, and we are looking forward to working with him. Education is such a major part of our growth. It comes up in every aspect of economic development. So we will hear from Dr. Naflin shortly. The sewer, our new $1,039,000 project, the engineers are testing it, and I do intend to call the media when we get ready to pull the plug, but they are testing it to make sure that all is well with that. So you can expect in maybe a week or so that we'll have some public relations in reference to that million-dollar project. I don't mean to relish in other cities struggling, but I had a visitor from South Louisiana who wanted to know what we had done to survive some of the hard times that we have survived, the closure of International Paper Company. Then subsequently, we experienced the burning of Southern Plug, which employed 65 people. And then Georgia Pacific closed, which employed about 200 people from in and around Morehouse Parish. So we suffered three blows in succession to each other, but we are still surviving, and we are certainly appreciative for our new employer, DG Food. And I shared with this gentleman some of the methods that we had employed to stay in place, and he was very impressed with the information that I shared with him, as I was with what he shared with me about some of the techniques that they are employing. But I also ask you to continue to support the city of Bastrop because we are hanging on at some very, very difficult times. As you listen to the national media and you see cities going bankrupt, and police officers are being laid off, and just all kinds of problems, don't mean to gloat at somebody else's misfortune, but we are holding on, and I am thankful for that. So we should learn to be thankful for things as well as they are.
Yes.
We are a little bit closer to our police cars. We had a contractor to come and evaluate the things that we have to do to retrofit the building to meet the ADA Act, I believe around, Mr. McKee, is it September, the contractor? About September?
Yes, September.
To make those corrections, we had represented from the USDA here as we walked through a final walkthrough, so we expect to have some action on getting our police cars. We continue to experience interest in housing and development in our area. The Garden Apartment apparently is changing hands, and they are going to make some renovations over there. We have the Daisy Street Project that's going to be going up real soon. I'm looking forward to that. And I had another developer today that expressed an interest, and I will be meeting with him in a week, and certainly I will be sharing information with the superintendent because when you have housing development that shifts your population, increases your population in certain areas, and superintendent needs to be aware of that because the changing as far as children and where they are going to school. The M2 renewable equipment for the sewer treatment on Martin Luther King, I sent letters to all of our representatives, state and local and national level representatives. I have been hearing back from them in terms of assessing this new equipment. September 11th, 11:45 is the demonstration date. I have asked our representatives to come or send a designated person so they can see this demonstration, and also they are wanting some information on the success rating of it, and Joe is going to get that information for us. Our Miracle Memory Project, I know it's something that we normally do at Christmas time, but I felt so inclined to do something for two organizations who have really, really made an impression on me. New Life Temple on Van Avenue, every year they have a Youth Impact Seminar, and it goes on for about a week. I go over there, they have a great time. They had about 400 children this year. And Youthquake, they have about 1,000 children. So we made a contribution to each one of those organizations to support them in their efforts to give to a cause that's far greater than themselves, which is what our goal should be as public servants, is to serve a cause greater than self. I believe that concludes my announcements. Are there any other announcements? Well, I'm going to ask, well, okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Naflin if he will come at this time. He is our new superintendent of education, and we want to work with him and make sure that he has a successful kickoff to school, and we will be meeting and talking about how we can help you with that, Dr. Naflin. I present to you Dr. George Naflin.
Good evening. I'm very thankful and appreciative to be invited tonight to come and speak with you. A little bit about myself, I have a very humble beginning. I was born in Charity Hospital in New Orleans, Louisiana, and as I was growing up, we lived in a four-room block house, and I took baths in a number-three tub. Now, for the younger people, you don't understand exactly what that is, but there's some older people that know what a number-three tub is. I was born to Baptist preacher, and my mother was a nurse. Graduated from Jackson High School in Jackson, Louisiana. I attended and graduated Southwest Junior College, Millsaps College, and I graduated from Mississippi State twice, with, once with a master's degree and once with a PhD. I've served the United States as a United States Marine. I have served the children of Mississippi in a number of capacities, as a teacher, as a coach, as an athletic director, as an assistant principal, the director of an alternative school, a principal, and as the assistant superintendent of the Tupelo Public School District. Several boards that I have been on, I'm on the Deacon Board at White Hill Missionary Baptist Church. I was on the Kiwanis Club Board, the Boys and Girls Club Board, Tupelo Park and Rec Board, and many others. And since I've been here, I've had an opportunity to join the Lions Club and the Chamber of Commerce. I noticed that the mayor has one of her, has as one of her objective to have one of the top school districts in the state. And I share with that same goal that she has because I realize that it is essential for economic development to take place, for schools to be at the top of their game. Toyota recently came to a facility near Tupelo, Mississippi, and one of the things that they extensively examined was the school system before they could have chosen anywhere in the country to go, but they came to near the Tupelo area. And part of the reason was because of the school system in that area. I have as one of my short-term goals is for all schools in the Morehouse Parish School District to become where you can be at C-level. Now, that's a short-term goal. That's within one to three years. Now, I do know and I understand that the largest room in the world is the room for improvement, and I intend for us to get better every year. Our faculty and staff are faced with a number of challenges and changes this year, and some of them I had nothing to do with. Some of them came from the state level. Act 54 came from the state level, the way that they will be assessed, which is campus, that didn't come from my level, that came from the state level. And then, in addition to that, they have to adjust to a new supervisor. They have to adjust to me. So they're faced with a lot of changes, but in this life, you have to realize that everything must change. The city of Bastrop can expect the new superintendent to be accessible, to be available, to be visible. They can expect that teamwork and willingness to work with parents, work with community, and work with the city in order to make our city better. In the word team, when I used to coach, together everyone achieves more, and that's the type of superintendent I want to be. Well, if you expect me to come and make all the wonderful changes you want, and you want me to do it all by myself, then that's ludicrous. I can't do it by myself. I need your help. I need your cooperation. And finally, my motto for this year would be walking into success, one step at a time and one child at a time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Naflin. I've been so very impressed with his philosophy, and at the luncheon, he made it a point to share with us that he now has over 4,000 children, and that each one is an individual, and he is looking out for our well-being, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. We have another educator here with us, but I'm going to deviate from education a little bit and ask Mrs. Princess Piggy's. She is one of our local talents. She has accomplished much, and she asked me if I would write a letter in support of her organization, which is a very strong organization. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about it. But she's the president of this prestigious organization, a membership of over 300,000. She has traveled abroad. She is the president of it, and they are getting ready to have their big event in New Orleans in September. And this is a local talent that we have here that has virtually gone unnoticed. But I wanted to bring her to center stage and let her talk about her missionary group a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to all of you. I'm Princess Piggy's, and I am a resident of Bastrop here for some 30 years. I'm a retired educator from Bastrop High School. But now about the organization that I had. I am the president of the Women's Missionary Council of the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, and I head an organization of about 300,000 women, and we have women from all over the world here in the United States of America, Haiti, Jamaica, and also Africa. I'm just delighted to be here to say that we focus, one of our main focuses beside doing missionary work, we focus on education also. We give scholarships to our young members, to our college students. We have a special program for males called SOS, Save Our Sons, that we give to our college males, and we are delighted to do that. We are based, as I said, all over the United States, and as I said also, this comes from the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church. And most of you know where the junior high school is. My church is St. Mary's CME Temple, we call it, right there by the junior high school. I did write a letter. We are getting ready to have what we call our Unity Summit, and it's going to be in New Orleans, Louisiana. And I had invited the First Lady of the United States of America to be our guest speaker in New Orleans on September 27 in New Orleans. And our mayor was very gracious to me. She wrote a letter in support of trying to get Mrs. Obama to be our speaker. She has not answered us yet, but we still have our fingers crossed in hoping that she will come and be with us because we will have women from Haiti, Jamaica, and Africa at our meeting. And I'm very appreciative to the mayor for writing a letter for us in support of trying to get Mrs. Obama as our speaker. Of course, if she doesn't come, then we can understand that she is running really on a very tight schedule. But anyway, we thought we would start with the top. It doesn't hurt. So thank you, Mayor, for all of your support in my efforts to do, to carry out what I think the Lord has placed before me, and that do all we can for everybody whenever we can, wherever we can. Thank you so much.
If you'll remain there, Ms. Piggy's. On behalf of the city of Bastrop, I wish to present you with this certificate of recognition. We are proud of you as one of our local leaders to have gained national recognition.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I did want to say to our superintendent that I am a graduate of Grambling State University. I'm also a graduate of Southern University in Baton Rouge, and I hold a master's degree from what is used to be called Northeast State University, and I hold a doctorate degree from Mouse College in Birmingham, Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Piggy, for that presentation. I think it's so important that we recognize each other and the local talent that we have within our own community. Sometimes I think about the scripture, "Prophet has no honor in his own country," but I want to recognize you and thank you for your leadership. Education is so important to our area, and I had another visitor who was with the Delta Community College, and he's going to make a presentation with us. We are undergoing massive changes in every segment of education, but Dr. Ryan offered me the reassurance of the presence of adult education in this area. He has with him Ms. Low Dunn, who was former board member, served for 20 years on the board, and she still, Ms. Dunn, would you stand up? She still remains very active with economic development, and anytime I call on her, I want to thank you for being here tonight, and she's a part of the technical college system, the Delta Community College. Let me get used to the change. I present to you Dr. Jerry Ryan. Thank you so much for being here.
Mayor and members of the council, I really appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you this evening and talk about Louisiana Delta Community College and your Bastrop campus. I was impressed with Dr. Naflin's brief presentation. I want you to know we've already met with him, and we're trying to work out a great partnership with the school superintendent to better serve the children. And I couldn't help but thinking when he said he was the son of a preacher, that the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. He did a pretty good, pretty good job there. And Ms. Piggy, I've instructed Ms. Dunn to offer you a job tomorrow with your, you may not have the time, but with those credentials, we'd certainly love you to be teaching for us. Again, thanks for inviting me. Louisiana Delta Community College is starting a new era. As of July 1st, we merged with what was Northeast Louisiana Technical College, and we are now an institution that has eight campuses, 4,700 students, and four schools, a school of business, a school of health, a school of technology, and a school of liberal arts. Our mission is, quite simply, jobs, jobs, jobs. So we really believe that we can work with your economic development organization and the mayor and the members of the council in our effort to try to develop the workforce for your economic development. Our Bastrop campus, under the leadership of Low Dunn, is our third-largest campus now, and we hope to make it even larger. The programs that have been there have been, as you probably know, welding and some healthcare programs, LPN, survey nurse assistant, patient care technician. We're going to be able to add liberal arts, general business remediation, and what Low tells me has already become a real popular option is we're going to be teaching the GED. So for those of you that have, you know, people that you know in town that are constituents that you're close to that haven't had that chance to get that high school diploma yet, we would really encourage you to come to the Bastrop campus, have them come to the Bastrop campus and get it. And our GED program is taught in conjunction with the degree program, so the student, no matter what their age, will complete a GED and get a trained skill at the same time. So they'll be able to enter the job market, and hopefully the citizens of this town have demonstrated their resiliency through the kind of layoffs that they've had. But we at the community college would certainly like to give them another chance with another career by coming to us and train. We also have the opportunity for your businesses to get their employees trained. We have a division that does that, Training and Development of current employees. Your employers in town will tell you that employees need to be constantly trained, so we want to make sure that they know that we can do that as well. So we really hope that you will encourage people to come. Low Dunn is a phenomenal leader, as I think you already know, and she's got, now got responsibility for an entire campus of a community college instead of just a campus of a technical college, and we know she's going to do a really good job. So my commitment to you is that we will work with all of you to make sure the Bastrop campus is one of the best, if not the best, campus in the system. How's that? Great. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. And I really appreciate the reassurance of the presence of adult education in our area that is so important to us as we look towards economic development. As both educational leaders have indicated, economic development is so tied to that. In fact, one year, I had some investors that were interested in coming to this community, and they were based out of China, their parent company, and they wanted to visit some schools. And they told us the schools that they wanted to go to. We didn't have the luxury of picking because they didn't want a cherry-picked stage setup. They wanted to see what they needed to see to make their decision. So we're going to work hand in hand with all of our educational institutions to make sure that we offer the best that we can. Sales tax exemption dates, August 3rd and 4th, that's when the state offers some relief and some incentive for back-to-school purchases, and I don't think it goes to major ticket items, so don't go out and buy the Bentley or those big cars that you want during that time because that's not going to change any. But those are dates you might want to mark in terms of shopping. I believe I've covered everything with announcements, haven't I, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I would like to say to our visitors, I appreciate your coming. If you will, you're certainly welcome to stay. Does she want to say something else, Dr. Ryan?
The waitress expected.
Okay, okay. You are perfectly welcome to stay, but at this time, we will excuse you because we know you've had a long, long day, so you're...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Okay. Item number five, at this time, I will entertain a motion for, to approve the minutes of regular meeting, June 14, 2012, and special meeting, June 28, 2012.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Aye, second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1456, Bills and Claims for the Month of June 2012. Mr. Locke?
May I move for the acceptance of the Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1456, Bills and Claims for the Month of June 12, June 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, appoint a member to the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Debbie Rogers. Seven years you're going to talk to us. Ms. Rogers is one of our chartered members of the zoning, from day one.
I have been pleased to be, to serve the community on the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. As I was asked if I would like to stay on the commission, I was just greatly pleased that someone had asked me to do that, and I have really enjoyed serving. I think we have accomplished great things for the community, for the betterment of the community and the parish.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your service. This is an appointment for seven years?
Yes, ma'am.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, this is an appointment we need council approval on. At this time, I will entertain a motion on reappointing Ms. Debbie Rogers back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. You stuck with us. Item number eight, appoint a member to the Bastrop Zoning Board of Adjustment, Jan W., for five years. Is Ms. W. here? Ms. W. is not here. Well, at this time, I believe she has accepted this appointment. At this time, I will entertain a motion on appointing Jan W.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion, action, permission to advertise for bids for airport tax-away lighting. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is a grant that's fully funded. I think it's 95% from FAA and 5% is from the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation. The funding is available, and the state and the FAA is ready for us to advertise for bids on that.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this request. Is submitted by Ms. Goldman?
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Nathan?
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, discussion, action, bid on Ditto Building. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, we advertised for bids, and we set the minimum bid for the appraised value, which was $366,000, and we got no bids whatsoever. The bid opening was, the bids were due yesterday at 4:00, but nobody submitted anything.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, when something like this happens, I think we need your guidance. We're really trying to get something going there. Of course, we don't want to break any violations in the laws or to get where we're trying to go, but what's your guidance on this? Or is this something you'd rather talk with me about at another time?
Although, I can talk about it here.
Okay.
I think that the fact that you got no bids for the $366,000, that means that the appraisal, actually, the appraisal numbers, it has to be a lot lower at this point because it's what a willing and able and interested buyer in the area is willing to bid to pay for the property, and this tells us, and you have to go through this process. When you have an appraisal in hand, you have to set, set the amount, and you've gone through this process, and there's no one submitting a bid. So I think we need to modify this if that's the will. I will look at what the options are. I believe that there are several.
Okay.
And we will go with something lower or perhaps, well, it just depends on what And we will go with something lower or perhaps, well, it just depends on what the comfort level of the city is.
Okay.
But I've been through this before elsewhere, and what it meant was you were able to sell it for less than what the formal appraisal was because that meant that the appraisal, that doesn't mean the appraisal was not legitimate, it just meant that there was no willing and able buyer in the market.
Okay. Okay. Well, okay, we'll be open to your guidance on that, Mr. Lawrence.
Hold it one second.
Sure.
While y'all do that. You know, depending on what you're prepared to authorize now, Mayor, we could, you know, if you wanted to authorize us to take some action now, to relet it out for a bid to the extent that the law lets us do it without being shackled with the 366 number, you know, perhaps the council could say that the city is authorized to advertise, you know, to do it over again.
Okay.
But without that, that minimum bid amount.
Okay. Council members, I will entertain your thoughts on what Mr. Lawrence is proposing here. I know we do want to get some economic development going in that building. It has been idle for many, many years. Ms. King, are you still getting inquiries about it? If you would, come to the microphone. Council members, I'll entertain your thoughts on this.
I have one, since Ms. King's up to the podium. What about offering a trade-off, maybe for some company to come in here, if they're going to create some jobs over a period of time, we could trade it off?
Yes. We have had some interest in that, not recently, but we have had some interest in that, and I think by going through this process that we've done, that that'll make us in a better position to do, do something. But of course, Mr. Lawrence will have to give us the guidance on what we can do. I've had other interests. I've not had anyone actually offer, you know, in any of my talks with anyone, no one's ever offered a full $366,000. You know, we've had some inquiries for people who might be willing to put the money into the building, which could be probably over a million dollars to get this building back to a usable state. So we have had some people that are interested. I haven't talked with the person who was interested. That's been about six months ago, and we've gone through a process because we had to get the appraisal, but I think there's still some potential people out there, but they're not going to want it, you know, they're going to want some kind of incentive to put that much money into the building, and I think the mayor and Mr. Lawrence have gone through a process here that we really had to go through to, with the appraisal, and now this bid, and I think that, I would suggest that maybe you do re-advertise it without that restriction on there and just see, see what kind of interest you get at a lower level, and then it'll be up to the city council and the mayor and Mr. Lawrence to evaluate those. I think there's still people out there, but I have not talked to anyone in several months because we've been kind of working through this process.
Okay. Council members, any other comments you'd like to share at this time?
I have a question for Mr. Lawrence.
Okay.
Could we offer this as a faith offer from whoever may be interested in this building?
I want to make sure that I understand what that means. I, I think that when you say offer, do you mean offer ownership of it or use of it?
A good faith offer slash ownership.
I think you can do more in the arena of allowing use, but it becomes very restrictive when you talk about transferring ownership because a public entity cannot donate ownership of anything. But you can do 99-year leases, you can do, you know, other things that might be financially attractive to some business where they don't have to put out the money for the cost of acquisition. I mean, really, there are just a whole lot of things you can do when you're not talking about actually taking ownership or transferring ownership.
What about if they would, we will allow them to give us an offer since this 366 evidently is way too high from the condition of the building?
Right.
Just take an offer from them and let Ms. King or whoever bring it back and let the council decide on which route we take.
That's a worthwhile idea if what you're saying to me is listen and get some feedback from what it is that business folks out there are saying that they're willing to do a deal for.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we hear that, maybe we can structure something because
Yeah.
Clearly, now you're no longer shackled with the 366 bottom number because you've tried it, it doesn't work. So we know that you're not shackled with that, but I think that that's a worthwhile idea to listen and to hear what a willing and interested buyer out there is willing to want to pay or willing to want to arrange for use of the building.
And we have the option to accept it or not.
Yes, because what we would do is, I mean, we'd get feedback first. If we're talking about something different from transferring ownership, we have a lot of options. If we're talking about transferring ownership, which is what this involved, there may be some type of a bid process that we would still have to go through, but we wouldn't be shackled with this minimum bid number.
Because it's public property.
Right. So as long as you can't give it away and you have to give everybody an equal shot at it.
Right.
That's sort of the general rule.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms.
Do you consider that surplus property?
Yes, because it means the city no longer has a use for it. It definitely qualifies as surplus. Yes.
Um, right now, we're, we're in a mindset of trying to push for development on the west side of town, and I think we, and I'm asking the council to consider, let's not have any delays in that, so whatever within the law, legal constraints that Doug has put out there that we need to operate, let's keep this alive in terms of trying to promote acquisition of the Ditto Building, but to not, not to the extent that it's going to get us in trouble with giving away public property, but he has indicated here two parameters we have to operate, can't give it away, and everybody has to have a fair shot at it. A few months ago, we granted Ms. King permission to entertain offers, and I think we still need to empower her with that ability so she can do research and come back, and then we can talk about what's legally doable. And I ask the council if you'll take, take under consideration, we need to keep something alive with this. We have several things going on right now. We have groups that are interested in working with us on the west side of town. We've got the listening ear of our elected officials with getting something done about that sewer plant that's sitting in the heart of Mr. Locke's district. Mr. Locke, who is it, in part of somebody else's district too, Willie, Mr. McKee?
My district.
Okay. So we have several things going on now, and I think we need to keep the momentum going while we have some energy and interest. So, Mr. Lawrence, what do we need to ask the council for to keep this going?
If, if what the council is interested in is a re-advertising process where it can be, where it can go out for bid and to be sold, you know, what you can do now is to put a motion on the floor to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to re-advertise the property for sale, subject to the, whatever applicable minimum bid requirements might exist in light of what we found out now from, from the fact that 366 doesn't work. So you can make that type of a motion, re-advertise it, subject to whatever minimum bid requirements we are now required to adhere to in light of this no bid at the $366,000 price. In addition to doing that, which is authorizing a rebid, you can also say we will accept any other different ideas that are coming in that deal with something other than an actual sale of the property.
With the approval of the board.
Yes. I mean, somebody might want to lease it or something like that, so, so I say we close no doors, and if you're trying to get it back where we can look at possible bids, just give us permission to do what we can to rebid it without being shackled with the minimum $366,000 bid price.
At this time, I will entertain a motion from the council in respect to Mr. Lawrence's suggestion on how to frame your motion.
I make that move, Mr. Lawrence, if I was to refrain this.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Mr. Ms. King?
Well, I'll just...
If you would continue to pursue suggestions and recommendations and situations, and I'll get with Mr. Lawrence, and we'll bring it before the council and see what's doable.
Yeah.
Mayor, and if I may say this, based upon what Mr. Armstrong was talking about, if, if y'all want, you know, for us to explore something like giving credit for job creation, I mean, all those things are on the table, you know, that, this doesn't preclude any of this, if that's what y'all want to do.
Right.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to continue to work on that, and we'll be working together to try to, to bring something into that building that'll fit the neighborhood and be an asset to the community. I think that's what everyone wants.
I think so. Thank you so much, Ms. King. And it is so important to, to work on this while we have interest in that community, and it really, really stays on my mind a lot when I look at every interest into town, and forgive me if I said all of this the last time before 25, that's fine, and coming in from Walmart, that's fine, and we really need to concentrate our energies on the west side of town to stimulate growth, and while we have educational folks that are willing to work with us, let's keep the momentum. Thank you so much for that. Item number 11, ordinance 12-4211, and ordinance authorizing the borrowing by the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, 1.15, gosh, a million, you know what I'm saying, Ms. Goldman?
1.5 million.
Our revenue anticipation, no.
Mayor, this is, I think, our 13th year. This is something we do annually, and it just ties over on our cash flow problem. Usually, from September to November, our, we don't deposit near about the revenue that we do the rest of the year. So this is just an anticipation loan that the bond commission approves, and this is just one of many steps. We've already done one, I think, a few months ago, but when our taxes are due, comes in, then we pay this back. We never, or late, we always pay it way early before it's even done, but this is one of the processes. We don't need to take action, this is just for introduction only, and next month, we'll come back, we'll have our bids in, and we'll know if we have somebody bid on it, we'll know the interest rate, we'll know everything at the next meeting before you actually vote on it. So this is just an introduction only.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, for that presentation. At this time, I will entertain a motion to expand the agenda to consider a license, a liquor license application, and also, well, this is for club, old school, 924 Luther, and also to consider declaring property in the corner of Welch and Marable a surplus. So we'll hear from Mr. McKee on that. At this time, I will entertain a motion to expand the agenda on these two items.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Aye, second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? We will take the club, school, class B. Chief Black.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the issuance of liquor license, a club, old school, located 924 Luther Drive, pending that they take care, make sure they have all the proper permits and licenses from the city.
And you've heard the presentation by Chief Black. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong? Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong?
Aye, second, Mayor.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have. When will they have the paperwork in order?
Well, I think the state's already approved them for the state license. I think there may be some issues at, in the clerk's office, I'm not sure, occupational licenses, something like that.
Okay. Nothing major, though?
Not that I'm aware of. That's the only two I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next item, to consider declaring property on the corner of Welch and Marable Streets as surplus. Mr. McKee, you've got some information on that?
Mayor, vote of aldermen, Ms. LaRona Peoples, as a matter of fact, is here tonight. Would you stand, Ms. Peoples? They own the land immediately adjacent to the property we own at the intersection of, at the southwest corner of Marable and Welch. It's a real small piece of land. It's really of no use to the city, but it would be of some use to them because they own the land right next to it. And their request is that the city consider making a surplus property and putting it up for bid.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, anything in particulars you need to address from a legal standpoint?
No, if it's, if it's not needed for a public purpose, you know, that certainly can be done.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. McKee. How long has it been under the city's auspices, Mr. McKee? How long have we owned it?
I don't know the exact date, but since the 70s.
Since the 70s? Okay. Council members, you have heard this request. Ms. Peoples, is it something that you wanted to express? Council members, what is your pleasure on this request?
I'd like to make the motion that we sell the surplus property to Ms. Peoples.
Submit to bid.
Bid.
I think it's to declare it surplus.
Declare it surplus property.
And to authorize sale by bid. If I could say before you, move to declare the property surplus, it's no longer needed by the city, and to authorize its sale by bid.
All right. Mr. Armstrong, you can restate all that.
You can just say whatever it was I said. One question I have for Mr. McKee, is it valued at, in terms of what you know right now, does it have any type of appraised value from the past?
No, the only appraised value that we would even come close to having would be what the surplus is.
Okay.
It's, I'm going to say it's less than a half acre.
Less than a half acre?
If, if the, sometimes if the value of property is, is set at less than $5,000, you can do a private sale instead of having to do a bid, but we just don't know that, you know, we don't know that. So right now, we need to go through the bid process unless we hear something different.
Okay, and it's definitely worth, worth less than $5,000.
Yeah.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, sir.
Is there any instruction on that property?
No, sir. Let me give you the description. You know where the ditch runs behind Welch it? Where, where the intersection of Marable and Welch? It's that little corner right there at the ditch before you get to...
Their house.
Their parents' house.
Give it to them.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong, your motion?
What if some, this bid had to be public, right?
Yes.
Now, what if someone else offered a little more for the property than she want?
I mean, you've got to sell it to them.
That's right.
Has been. Did you say that you, did he say that he felt it was worth less?
It's less than five thousand. Mr. Lawrence, what other alternative do we have if we just want to adjudicate the property to her?
Does she have a joint in property?
I'm sorry, I actually had it up on the screen here. That's why I was mentioning it. You can do what we call a private sale. I would say go ahead and authorize the motion as read, but then also give us the leeway to look at pulling that if we find that this value, if we confirm this value is very low, and look at the alternative, if that's what the will of the council and the mayor is. If y'all understand what I'm saying.
Yes.
Now, who would be responsible for having an appraisal done?
That's what we were sitting here talking about. I mean, we know that you can go out and pay for one, and we're trying to figure out, we want to look at this and see whether or not we can, is there another way other than actually having to, you know, hire an appraisal, an appraiser to do it? If there's another way to place evaluation on it, and it comes under that five thousand, then we'll, you know, we'll explain to you what the remaining options are.
Well, it's obvious the property means a lot to you to acquire, because it is adjacent to property that's in your family? Is that correct? Okay. So, Mr. Lawrence, you'll have to guide us on that. Mr. Armstrong, you put a motion on the table, Mr. Armstrong? You had a motion? Are we clear on the motion? As read, with doing the legal research in terms of how to dispose of the property without breaking any laws?
Looks like you still need to do the bid process.
Okay.
And we'll see what we can work with.
Okay. Well, any prospective buyer would need to get with Ms. Goldman to find out, will advertising?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion? Is there a second on the motion? Or does Mr. Armstrong need to rephrase that?
It can remain as it was, and it can be seconded, and we can work within the parameters of that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Please get with Ms. Goldman in terms of the particulars, and she'll explain. She is our city clerk. I believe we have covered everything that's on this agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Duly moved?
Second.
And second. All in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.